I will go ahead and call this regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order for Monday, January 6, 2025. Happy New Year to everyone. Could I please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Okay. Could I get a motion to go into executive session? Sarah moves. Monica seconds. All in favor? Okay. All right. We will be back very shortly. All right. Tonight, we have a presentation from Mr. Jim Cameron for TV 79. As a refresher, over the course of 2025, we're going to have all of our, I don't have a better word to describe it, our less major commissions, so not Parks and Rec or those types of commissions, but ones that don't get as much visibility as something like Parks and Rec, to come and talk about their board or their commission, their mission, and what they're working on, just to give us some more visibility into what they do, but also give folks like Jim and others an opportunity to ask us questions, confirm their direction, talk about resource needs, all that sort of thing. And I think it's just going to be a much better thing to have this kind of dialogue for everybody, anybody watching, plus these individual boards and commissions. So, Mr. Cameron, thank you for coming this evening. We really appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thank you for giving me my 10 minutes of airtime. I won't exceed that. I promise you, I'll be expeditious. Mike Wheeler, who's the chairman of the TV 79 Advisory Board, prepared this deck. He's downstairs at the RTM Rules Committee meeting, so he asked me to do the presentation. The current makeup of the TV 79 Advisory Board has these members who have not been reappointed to the board for another year. We're meeting tomorrow night, this advisory board is, with Mr. Zagrodsky, to talk about some of the ideas that he has. And I actually welcome the idea because I think some of these people need to be re-interviewed.
Yeah.
There are people on this list who have not attended a meeting this year. There are people on this list who do not watch TV 79. And I think it's time maybe to find some better, some different people who might be more engaged in the advisory role that the advisory board does play, because they're there to not only help give me direction, but also to help with some of the heavy lifting. I'm a little maxed out in terms of bandwidth right now, so a lot of people come to me with, oh, why don't we do this, and we could do this, and we could do that. And I go, what do you mean, "we," Kimosabi? It's not "we." It's usually "me," because everything we're going to talk about that TV 79 has done so far is "me." It's not necessarily the, with a few exceptions, Mike Wheeler being an excellent example of very hands-on chair. So, so far this year, 79 has covered more than 600 meetings. The Inside Town Hall series is continuing apace. Community Matters, we've done 20 different Ask the First Selectmen shows, where people were able to send in unedited questions, and the first selectman answered them. The First Selectmen reports that Mr. Zagrodsky has done, and we have 1,200 subscribers to our weekly email program guide. A little hard to read this, so that's why I gave you the handout, but some of the shows have done very well. You know, we've got 500 views to the First Selectmen's report on Great Island. I mean, anything that has to do with Great Island scores very well in terms of viewership. Some other meetings, not so well. I mean, there are some meetings that we cover that are in single digits in terms of viewership. But we're accessible on every platform short of your microwave oven. You can watch us on cable. You can watch us on, through our website. You can watch us on YouTube. We are carrying everything live. It's available for replay on demand. We have, through our website, playlists, so you can go specifically to one board or commission and look for that. Closed captioning is available as well, too, if you are hearing challenged. We are also now using AI meeting summaries, using the transcript from the meeting, and those have proven very useful, I think, especially in lengthy meetings such as Saturday's nine-hour-long Board of Education budget review. It's useful to, I call it the hors d'oeuvre. You know, it's not the main course, but it's enough to give you a sense of, oh, I want to watch the HHR meeting because they were talking about X, Y, and Z. We're available through social media. You can watch us on Twitter. A fair amount of our viewership is listenership, actually. People on the train coming home, they can watch a Board of Finance meeting before they get home, and they can listen to it on Twitter. I've seen people participate in meetings through Twitter or through other platforms as well, too. And it's our meeting coverage which is driving local media coverage. The Patch, the Darien Times, The Advocate, CT Examiner, it's rare that those people actually have a reporter who sits in this room. They're usually either sitting at home or they're watching the meeting after the fact on demand through our website. And I've got a good cooperative relationship with most of them in terms of, I'll tip them off if there was, don't miss the X, Y, and Z meeting. Something interesting happened there. And they're now increasingly giving us credit and putting a link in their news coverage saying, here's the meeting. You can watch the whole meeting by clicking on this link, which takes people directly back to the website or our video as well, too. I'm also proud of the fact that the people that do the actual meeting coverage, the vimeographers, who are sitting up in the booth right now and down in Room 119 and covering the various remotes that we do, they're, almost all of them are students from Norwalk Community College. We've had one summer intern or spring intern from DHS, the high school, but those kids from NCC are incredibly hardworking. They have aspirations of working in this business as a career, so this is good on-the-job training. I do everything I can to help them network into other job possibilities. I write great letters of recommendation, and some of them have gone on to other more prestigious colleges than NCC. And we've also engaged some of them to do special assignments, to produce PSAAs or do community vignettes, or work with the Health Department, with Mindy, to produce some PSAAs on the work of that group as well, too. So our goals for the next year are, first of all, to increase awareness of TV 79 among the people that really should be watching it the most. That's like RTM members. Mike can testify, I know, from interviewing people who were petitioning to get onto the RTM after the election process to fill vacancies. It was astounding to me how little they knew about town government. They really, I mean, it was good for them for wanting to be on the RTM, but they had no idea what the RTM was, how it operates, how it interfaces with other groups. And my favorite trick question when we're interviewing people on those board for RTM positions is, how do you know what's, how do you follow what's going on in town? How do you follow the news of what's going on in town? The right answer is, I watch TV 79. Nobody among the five candidates in my particular district mentioned TV 79.
And I'll add four for mine.
Not one. Not one.
One said TV 666.
I don't know what that is, but it ain't us, you know? So, we have a lot of work to do in terms of making, making, marketing our awareness of what it is that we do. And we're going to start with the RTM, because I think a lot of RTM members don't really know how we operate. They know that there's something out there. They wait for Jack Davis to send them an email saying, look at this meeting at this link, starting at 23 minutes in. You want to see this presentation. They should be looking at those meetings themselves. If they're on planning, zoning, and housing, they should be watching P&amp;Z, and they should know how to find those things through the website. So, Mike and I are going to do a tutorial, I guess, at the February meeting, we hope, you know, just a 10, 15-minute demonstration at the meeting itself for RTM and for the viewing public as to how to use TV 79, how to access it. And trust me, I get emails at least once a week from somebody who's looking for, I'm looking for a Blight Review Board meeting from 2017, and I can't seem to find it. Well, I can find it fast, and I'm happy to do that service so that person can find that particular meeting. But we're doing what we can, maybe improve the website, make it a little more accessible and searchable. I'm really happy that the Town Newsletter, both the one that Marley works on and the one that John puts out on Alternate Weeks, is mentioning TV 79, is including links as well, too. I think we wanted to raise awareness of the notify-me option on the Town website, so people can sign up for following particular boards and commissions. I mean, I signed up for a couple, and every time a new agenda item goes up on the Town website for those groups, I get an email. Says, there's a meeting, there's a meeting coming up with the TV 79 Advisory Board. Well, I knew that, but now I'm, you know, getting a reminder as well, too. We also want to find a way of making the AI, the artificial intelligence meeting summaries more accessible. We want to make them as user-friendly as possible. And increasingly, as I say, we've got to do something to improve our visibility through marketing. Mr. Zagrodsky and I and a couple of others have beautiful magnets that sit on our cars. I'm not sure if it fits the BMW that Mr. Zagrodsky wears, but works just fine on my Prius. But we've got to do something to make sure people know that we're out there, that we're a service to them as well, too. So, that's the presentation. Happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
What's your level of confidence in the AI meeting summaries? How is that evolving? What can we say to people about them?
I'm confident, because I look them over before I post them. And the only thing I will change, because I don't want to be editing an AI summary unless there's something that's grossly wrong, like somebody's name is misspelled, or they didn't understand it completely. But if I get into editing some AI summaries and not others, then people are going to go, well, why are you cherry-picking the ones you're changing and you're not changing others? But I'd say 95% of what they summarize is accurate. And a lot of them are also using timestamps as well, too. So they, there's a timestamp there that links to that particular discussion, so you can go and watch that for yourself and decide.
Over the summer when we tested it, we had chairs of planning and zoning and Board of Education review prototypes to say, how close were we? And it's generally 95%.
Yeah, it's superb. I mean...
Yeah. And it's getting better, I think, too.
Yeah, it's getting better.
Question. The advisory board, are those all Darien residents, or are they outside of everybody on the advisory board?
All Darien residents. Yep, yep.
So, I thought Cecil moved to Norwalk.
He's ex, he's ad hoc. He lives in Norwalk, but...
He maintains our website.
He's basically just helping out with tech issues. So he's not officially a member of the board, of the advisory board.
I think your website is great, and I use your information all the time. I wonder if there's a way, and I don't know how you would improve it, because I don't have a problem with it, but there are always improvements to be made, right? So, I think maybe when you're reaching out to the RTM, if you could talk to people that aren't as fluent with it and find out if there's some tweaks that you can make that would, you know, help a more beginner user.
I think that's a very good idea. I wanted to wait until after the holidays are over, which they are now, and we're thinking of redoing, doing another viewer survey and asking people, how do you access us? When do you access? What do you watch? What would you like to see that we're not covering? We've done those every two years for the past four or six years, I think, so it's good to get a, you know, kind of a trend line on how things are going. But making the website as accessible as possible is priority for us. I don't have any metrics on this, but I think the vast majority of our viewership is not watching us live. They're not watching us on cable at this meeting tonight at 7:45 on Monday, the 6th of January. They're watching at their convenience later, maybe jumping around, maybe skipping over this part of the meeting completely and going to something far more interesting to them.
No, they wouldn't use you.
But I think it's, you know, it's, given that people are looking at it on demand, I want to make sure that it's accessible and intuitive and easy to use.
But from the caucus experience, most of them didn't even know we're on demand. Their perception of Darien TV 79 was a linear channel on cable. And at least half said, no, I don't watch TV 79. I don't have cable anymore.
Right.
Well, you don't, their perception is that we're just a live linear channel and not, everything's on demand and with transcripts and timestamps and variable speeds and being able to read summaries so that they can process the information on any device in a format that's most comfortable for them.
Right.
Sounds like your February idea is a fantastic one, then.
I hope so.
It's a good place to start, but, you know, again, this is the, this is just one aspect of people's, I was going to say ignorance, no, lack of full understanding of how town government works. And it's not just if, you know, they may not know about TV 79 being available on Twitter. They think it's only on cable, and they cut the cord years ago. But I was astounded in conversation with people that were trying to get on the RTM. They didn't understand what the Board of Finance was, how the Board of Education operated independently, setting budgets. I mean, there's just a whole lot of, they don't teach civics in the high school anymore. They don't teach civics. Sorry, I'm getting frustrated.
The cliche is that we have news deserts now. But in Darien, we do not have a news desert with Darien TV 79. It's there, you just have to fit, we just have to teach people how to access it in the way they want to access, because all the information's readily available on their schedule. We just have to let them, we just have to show them where the water is.
I have a theory that, and maybe you guys could confirm it, maybe some of my videos had high viewership, not because I'm an extremely competent presenter, which I'm not.
Photogenic?
Photogenic, yes, I'll agree with that, but competent presenter, I don't know.
Because they're short.
Because they're short and to the point, right? So if I think about busy people in town, or even young people, just the way they consume media.
Right.
There are very few people who read the full-length book, watch the full-length movie, or the full-length Board of Education meeting. And so, somebody asked me a while back, so what, do you watch baseball? And I said, well, not really, but when I do, it's the news summary with all the highlights from 10 games that you need to know, delivered in seven minutes. And that's how I watch that. I don't sit and watch every single game throughout. I just don't do that. And I suspect there are a lot of people who might have the same point of view about some of these town meetings, which can go on for quite some time. I'll admit, and I have to watch a lot of this myself, if I couldn't play it on 1.75 or even 2X speed, I would lose my mind. There's just simply no amount of time that I have to do this.
But I wonder how many of you knew that you could, did you know you could speed it up?
Oh, thank, thank God for that. Seriously.
It's interesting. Everybody says it's shorter, but yet Joe Rogan's podcasts are three hours. And the one that is number one among women is, she does at least two hours. So, I haven't been able to reconcile the popularity of these long podcasts with people on TikTok.
It's amazing. I can't answer that question. I'm sure it's being played back faster than what it was recorded at. And I'm curious as to how many people are actually watching that all the way through, whether they're just watching snippets of Joe Rogan interviews that were particularly interesting, which gets back, actually, to my first point, which is, is there any value in trying to have a capability where you create something like that, which is, you didn't have time to look at this all week, but of all these meetings, here's a 20-minute digest of stuff that would really be helpful.
Yeah, Jim and I have talked about, we'll have a prototype for you to look at after, once the new meetings get, how we started the new year in planning and zoning and there'll be meeting, you'll have a couple of prototypes to take a look at.
Yeah, I'd be interested in that, because it strikes me that even AI would be able to help with something like that, which is to come in and say, here are the things that seem to be most worthy of your attention if you don't have time to watch all of this.
Yeah, that's a conversation I'd like to continue tomorrow night when you meet with the TV 79 Advisory Board.
I'll come talk to you guys about that. I'm not saying we definitely have to do it, but there's technology now where we could maybe advance the ball on that and create something that large numbers of people would access. And it may, in fact, trigger their interest in going and watching full meetings.
Right.
Certainly the chairs' reports and the liaison reports from each of the major committees and the OPC meeting. You watch that, and you've got a, and the department heads' meeting, and you've got a pretty good idea of what's going on in town.
Yep.
Yeah, that's true.
So, Jim, are you happy with, and Mike, are you happy with the number of people on the advisory board?
The number of people?
Yes.
Yeah, I think the number of people is fine.
Okay. We just want to find people that are a little more engaged.
I'd like you to kind of think about who those people are and see if there's other people. I mean, I reached out to the RTC and the DTC and asked them, you know, do you have anybody with some broadcasting experience? There's a lot of media people in this town, and they've come up with nothing. I was very disappointed that they didn't nominate anybody.
I actually know one lady who's upset about something, but I know to call her. She actually might be interested in this, so. We'll talk about that tomorrow, but I agree a refresh of your board membership could actually be very helpful to kind of re-energize that board.
Right.
We ought to talk specifically, though, about the board's role versus, say, your role in sort of board versus executive leadership, and what is the board spending its time on? And I've got a few ideas for that, too, because, as I told a number of folks, we don't want to have people signing up to be on a board. And you said, okay, well, now I'm on the board. Now what? What am I supposed to be doing? So, making sure there's a crisp, crisp value proposition for someone coming in to join your board. If I did do that, what would I be doing and how would I be helpful? And I think we've, we've got to make sure we have a compelling answer.
I think we should raise people's expectations of doing more than showing up and nodding and saying, Jim, you're doing a great job. Thanks. See you in three months.
Right.
Yeah. And that's, I need, I have pled, I've pleaded, I don't know what the past tense is, pleaded to my advisory board, please advise me.
Okay.
You're doing a great job. Just keep going with your doing.
Anyway, this, this is among the most important things we have as a vehicle for communication in this town, for education, for knowing what government's doing, a driver of transparency, all of that stuff. It is all embodied in TV 79. And so, having you guys...
Thank you for that endorsement. That's going to be our soundbite on social media this evening.
And it was really good.
No charge.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
It's super important, and there's so many interesting things in technology that could drive this further. I think having an engaged board to support you, and Mike, I know you chair the board for both of you, it's going to be really a great thing. I'm not saying this has to be done immediately. Let's use the ensuing weeks and months to reconstitute that board with some folks that really could be helpful, while at the same time and parallel, kind of articulating a vision as to what they do on that board. And also setting up a regular dialogue with the Board of Selectmen so that we can help you guys understand kind of what you're doing. But right now, based on what I'm seeing across other towns, I think this is, this is the example of how you do TV, municipal TV right. And there was a meeting with the New Canaan TV 79 folks here, and, I mean, the difference is literally night and day between the programming that they have and what we have here in Darien, and they can learn a lot from us. So, we continue to set the gold standard on this. Thanks to you, gentlemen, and everyone who helps you, and we should be able to carry that to new heights. So, I'm pretty committed to that. I think that's pretty important. Other questions for Jim or Mike?
Thank you for all that you do.
Thanks.
We really appreciate it. Gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll send Jack up.
Yeah. All right. Next up is the First Selectmen's Report. That's me. A couple of things. We are in the process of working on a project to reset how we do payments in the town of Darien. So this is anybody who comes in and wants to pay for anything, whether it's some kind of town service, where they want to pay for a beach sticker, or they want to pay taxes, or whatever they want to do. I think the current processes that we have in place are just okay right now. You certainly can get all those things done, but sometimes it can be difficult. Sometimes it's different between departments. Sometimes it's certain things you might want to use to pay for something, like young people use Venmo or Zelle or those sorts of things. We're just not readily in a position to accept all that right now. So Jennifer and I have been in conversations with a accountant, accounting and consultancy firm called CLA, Clifton Larson.
Allen.
Allen. And they have done a municipal study like this on multiple occasions to help municipalities rethink their payment acceptance systems. And this is something that Jack and I have talked about for more than a decade, for sure. And this is the first time, I think, either of us had really heard somebody come in and say, we've got a compelling value proposition to help you sort through that. I've got a, someone I know in town who's sort of retired and is an expert in this sort of thing, who's going to kind of serve as a consultant to help us with this. But I'm very enthusiastic about this. The work is going to take, what, four to six weeks, as far as they say, and we'll try to initiate that. There are funds for IT consulting that's sitting in this year's fiscal budget. That's more than enough to cover the cost of this study, which is $18,000, something like that, roughly. There's a budget of 25 available, and so I'd strongly recommend that we move forward with that. The objective would be that we can accept really any form of payment, and I don't care what young people come up with, we'll be able to accept it. And it's going to integrate seamlessly with our existing general ledger and accounting and accounts payable system. So, that's the other important thing to do on the backend so that it's not disruptive. It's actually helpful and additive. So, any comments on that particular effort, Jennifer?
No. What you'll see in the budget is, we won't have the full recommendations from this initial look by the time the budget comes to you, but a very rough estimate that I got from the consultant will be in the budget as a placeholder, just based on his experience with this. He thinks there will be some technology investment involved. So we'll put a placeholder in there. It will probably vary. When we actually come to the implementation of it, it will be, I'm sure, different than what we put in the budget, but we're estimating on the higher side. And then we'll get the recommendations now. We'll put the implementation into the fiscal '26 budget and hopefully have some good outcome in a year or so.
Yeah, but I think that's going to make it just a big difference and make life a lot easier for anybody who's trying to pay for town services of any kind.
So, you're talking walk-in with, like, Apple Pay?
Absolutely.
Maybe not even have to walk in?
Right. Apple Pay, Venmo, whatever you want to do. I mean, our objective is that I'd like Darien to be the most forward-thinking on that type of thing. It just makes the citizen experience a lot better.
Bitcoin?
Ethereum, whatever you got. We're ready.
Let's stay away from Bitcoin.
Oh, make enough to overcharge her if we do that.
[laughing]
Similarly, we are involved in a, it's more preliminary at this point, with a company that can help us with parking. And the issue that we have right now are these hanging tags for commuters into New York, as well as to various municipal lots that we have here in town. These guys, again, we just had one meeting. We have a couple other internal meetings before we get something more concrete to present to all of you, but the objective there would be to eliminate hanging tags, starting, ideally, this would be the last year we have them. But their work can also extend into eliminating beach passes, eliminating dump stickers, all of that, and replacing it with technology for plate readers, which we've all dealt with at LaGuardia and all these other places. There's no reason we can't advance to that. But this stuff would be great, because you could set up your annual parking pass on auto renew, and all of that's done electronically without any interaction with the town. And according to the discussions we've had with them now, a couple of discussions, and we've got one more coming after a town meeting, internal meeting, they can do it all, a single, single company to do that. So, more to come, but that also looks pretty positive. Last few things. We had the number of justices of peace sworn in. That's an interesting little job, but the biggest part of that is you can marry people if you're a justice of the peace. And I'd just like to thank everybody who signs up for that, for that duty. They were all enthusiastic about that. I, there was a community menorah lighting at the Grove Street Plaza on December 26th, day after Christmas, and that was orchestrated by Dan Guller. And he went, he did it last year. He went out and did it again this year, and it was cold and raining, I think, as it was last year. And he got a great crowd there. It was well-organized. There was food. There were lots of people. There were singing. And I just want to do a shout-out to him and the rest of the group that helped make that happen. It's wonderful to see those things in Darien. If you have a chance, the next time we have it next year, to go to that. It was super positive, and I really just have to thank Dan for being the energy behind stuff like that. He does a great job, so thank you to him. I had a meeting with Wave Strong. So Laura Bremer and Beatrice Clements came to see me about that effort, just to raise awareness about some of the work that they're doing. This was a group that was formed following the tragic deaths in our school system, what, three years ago now?
Yep.
Four years, 2022, three years ago. I think that's right. Anyway...
It'll be three years.
It'll be three years. And so, this group was formed in, really, towards the mental health of young people and really all folks in Darien. And anyway, it was a very impressive discussion that I had with them, and I just wanted to thank everybody who's part of Wave Strong. That's an important organization, and I think something that... Strong. That's an important organization, and I think something that if you have a chance to get to know better, you should. Let's see, that was all I had in the First Selectment's report. Jennifer, do you have anything to add?
I do not.
Okay. All right. Next up is Board Liaison Reports. Marcy?
No reports. Mental Health Task Force is meeting on Thursday, next Tuesday, and we'll meet as a whole group, so I'll have an update at our next meeting.
Okay. I'll report briefly for Mike. The BLIC Commission is meeting on Wednesday. That's why we don't have any BLIC cases to vote on for foreclosure at this meeting, but they will come up with the final recommendations of the commission as to which properties that have accumulated large amounts of BLIC fines. We are going to, my, my recommendation is that we consider those and, and we support foreclosing on those properties. It's time to enforce those regulations. And I just want to thank again the members of the BLIC Commission for, for doing all of that. Very, very helpful. So they're going to meet on Wednesday, and our next Board of Selectmen meeting, we will have a discussion and vote about that. Mike?
So the Gray Island Advisory Committee is, so we have four phases of this project, and we're kind of coming up to the end of the first phase, which is the vision, the initial vision plan. And we're starting to look at the master plan and the concept design. And we're using community feedback to help shape the priorities and looking at helping the, improve public access and amenities on the property. So the goal is to balance preserving the island's character while planning for the future. And our next meeting is on Wednesday. It'll be by Zoom. And that's it. Thank you.
Sarah?
The Hinley Homes and Royal Building Committee will next meet on Wednesday, the 15th at 6:00 PM. It's a virtual meeting, as it is every month. And for the Thriving Youth Darien group, the next meeting is going to be on Thursday, January 16th at 9:30 AM. The next two events will be on, one's on the 14th. It's the local prevention councils and youth bureaus from Greenwich and Stanford and Darien will be joining in a regional legislative forum to educate elected officials about prevention-related issues, and that's at 12:00 PM. And then the next program will be on January 30th at 12:00 PM. Thriving Youth will host a virtual lunch and learn on the topic of problem with online gambling, which youth seem to be facing. And so you can go onto Thriving Youth Darien site, and they can give you more information about that.
Okay. All right. Nothing else there? Let's see. Jennifer, any public comments?
None.
No public comments, do they? All right, new business. First up is to discuss and take action on a proposed legal settlement. Do we have anything to, which one was this? This was, all right. So this actually doesn't require a vote. We talked about this, and it's not actually ready for that, so we don't need to vote on that. So play that next. But we do have the next item, which is to discuss and take action on a proposed tax appeal. So we also don't need to discuss that because we've given them recommendations as to what they need to do next. So I guess there's nothing to decide there. The next one is to discuss citizen engagement and payment processing, which I've already done in my First Selectmen comments. The next one is to discuss and take action on an acting director, health, health services agreement. So we've discussed this a little bit, but just to summarize where we are, the question is, is that if there is an extended vacancy in the job of health services director for the town of Darien, what, or, or any town in Connecticut, what do you do? Well, the state of Connecticut requires that you have someone who is qualified to hold that position, available to step in in the event that you, your town has an extended absence. So what's happened is we have worked out a, a reciprocal agreement with the town of New Canaan, and we have finished negotiating that agreement. It's a kind of not the right word. It's, it's really just getting the language right on that agreement. And their attorney that they had engaged for this purpose, I think has done a superb job. Mindy's been involved. Town Council here has been involved. I think we're to the point that we could sign that, but my proposal is that I would go ahead and sign that agreement. It's still subject to review by the Connecticut Director of Health, and so when that team gets it, they'll get back to us with whether this version is acceptable. So I think we're good on that. I don't think we need a vote on that, do we, Jennifer?
I would say we should take a vote with the board giving you the authority to sign.
Okay. Could I get a motion?
John has a question.
Please.
So it says here, you have it, the First Selectman fails to respond to a request and the request shall be deemed. Do you want to put in like a time, like 48 hours? Or do you want to, do you want to leave that open?
I think that's a fair addition, within 48 hours. Fails to respond in a, in a, to a request. That's, that's a fair addition. Why don't we do that? If you, I mean, I don't know if this is urgent. What we could do is vote to, vote, vote for me to sign this pending other edits, which are things like this that maybe we don't need to discuss in the meeting. Why don't we do that?
Okay.
All right. Could I get a motion to authorize me to sign the health services agreement with the town of New Canaan pending final edits as proposed by any members or town council? Okay, Monica Moos, Sarah Secondes, all in favor? Okay, thank you. It's all feeling a little disheartened this evening. Let's see if we can get back on track. All right, before we go out of new business, can I vote to add one item to the agenda, which I neglected, and that is that the RTM has appointed Jim Cameron to be the person from the RTM to serve on the BLIC Commission, which he has agreed to do. And so I'd like to make sure that we vote him into that position at this meeting so he can participate in the Wednesday meeting of the BLIC Commission. So could I get a motion to approve Jim Cameron as the RTM representative to the BLIC Commission? Monica Moos, Marcy Secondes, all in favor? Okay. So that's, um, thank you. Old business. Discuss and take action on guidance for off capital, off-cycle capital requests. Where are we on that?
We've had some edits that have been come in. Jack, if you'd like to join at the voting.
Mr. Davis?
Only a few edits, but seem to be, Monica, you've given input, Jen, you've given input. I think we're in good shape. Jack?
Jack Davis, 197 Hoyt Street. So in speaking to Monica, there was a discussion about getting the information within four days prior to a Board of Selectmen meeting, and Monica came up with the perfect words, which is barring an emergency. So we put that at the front of that sentence, and that resolved Monica's concern. And actually, it was exactly the words, and we just copied and put it down.
Good.
The, the other thing is that we were talking about on the 10%.
I don't remember the word.
It's over. And when we typed it up, we neglected to put in a word. So it should be, that one line should read that it is within 10% or add the word not greater than $100,000. And part of the rationale for that was the board decided with the Board of Finance that anything at $1 million would probably be up for bonding. So 10% of that was $100,000. And from, in conversations with Jen and myself and knowing our experience, things are not over by $100,000. They're typically over by a lot more than $100,000. So we thought that was a good cutoff. And the things that were under $100,000, they're usually much lower than that. And we really don't want to nickel and dime things, no different than we have the town administrator and the director of finance able to sign off. And we even set up a fund within the capital account where I think it's $15,000 or $30,000 that we put in there for them to do different projects. That would allow us to handle both things and not nickel and dime the board on things so that you can operate efficiently. So those were the two suggestions. So the only, the real key is on the document you received to add the word not. So.
Okay. And Jack, you want increased threshold to be discussed and approved by the BOS? You want that to remain in this document?
No, I think it should come out.
I think it should come out.
Okay, so we're approving this.
Yeah, that was just a little memo to everyone that we had to talk about.
In text, though, within 10%, not greater than $100,000, removing the prophecies to be approved. Mike?
I have no other.
I'm okay with this. Anybody else have any edits, Rick?
No, I'd like to thank Jen, and I'd like to thank Jack for all your time. And Jack, particularly, thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
And yeah, all of you, this is, this was a great idea. Things that fall outside of a regular process are by nature disruptive. And it's not to say we can't have stuff that's off-cycle.
Yeah.
We can. But there ought to be some guidance as to when that can happen. And it's, it's really more of an encouragement to get things like this into regular cycles and regular processes when possible. And I think this was a great initiative. I applaud you for the idea and then everyone for their efforts in, in doing that. So could I get a motion to approve?
As amended.
As the guidance for off-cycle cap request as amended today. Could I get a motion for that? Sarah moves that. Monica Secondes, all in favor? Okay, great. All right, good. Thank you again. That's great. All right. Minutes, review and approve minutes from the December 16th, 2024 regular meeting. Does anyone have any edits to the minutes?
I do.
That's three.
Under Board Liaison, both myself and Mike gave reports.
Oh. You are correct.
On the side of that, I have no.
All right. Any other credits, questions on minutes?
No, motion to approve is amended.
All right, I will, thank you for moving that. Second? Monica Secondes, all in favor? Okay, thank you. That's your approved. Agenda review. We have the flood update, which I am going to film this month, and that'll come, let's watch that. And I think it'll answer questions about that, but if not, then we will have a separate effort. As far as beautification, they are meeting this month. And what that was about, as you recall, is their proposal to clean up some of the little garden spots around town. When they came to see me, we ended up pairing that quite a, back quite a bit to just focus on areas that are more easily maintained and to plant them with things that are easily maintained, as opposed to things that are seasonal, that have to be either replanted or cleaned up or made to look seasonal. So they've gone back and re, and given some additional thought to that plan. And the areas that were just going to be too hard to maintain, I said, look, there's, there's nothing wrong with grass because grass looks nice and it could be mowed and, and cared for simply. So they've come back and revised that, and we will hear from them when they present to the board. But I think that's well in hand, and we're going to end up with something that's going to make those areas look a lot nicer, not just when they initially do it, but five years from now, because it's going to be easy to maintain. So I, I like where they've ended up on all that. Let's see. Anything to add for agenda review that anyone wants to discuss? No?
Yeah, we're not meeting at 8:00 AM?
Yeah, so let's, let's go through that. So the, the next board meeting is the 21st, is that right?
Yeah.
So per your suggestion going forward, what we're going to do is we're going to now put the Board of Selectmen meeting the night prior and then meet the following day, but just for department heads. We can't do that this time because it's MLK Day on Monday. So instead, what we're going to do is have a truncated meeting. We're going to meet at 8:00 AM.
Right.
For just regular Board of Selectmen meeting. I think we'll get through that in 30 minutes. And once that's done, then at 8:30, we'll go into the department head meeting. So that way we can get a few things done. I think that agenda will be pretty short. It should be, should be the BLIC Commission foreclosure recommendations and probably a few appointments. Let's see about that. I don't know, I don't know where we end up on that.
And also.
There's something else.
We'll give you budget highlights at that point, and Open Gov will be open, so you can start reviewing it before we do.
Right.
Our budget reviews in February.
So that'll be a short meeting, but definitely we'll get that done and be ready to go at 8:30 for department heads.
Okay.
Jennifer, we left anything out? Is that it?
That's it.
Okay. All right, seeing nothing else. Next meeting then at 8 o'clock for Board of Selectmen and 8:30 for department heads. Can I get a motion to adjourn? Okay, Sarah moves, Marcy Secondes, all in favor? All right, we stand adjourned. Thank you very much.